The draft errata sheet. Dave, is the draft errata sheet on the website for the public? Or do they see that?
I did not post it.
Okay. All right. Now, I'm not sure what the etiquette is there with the errata. I guess because it's not approved. And it's a work in progress. We could probably put it up before the...
The vote.
Yeah, we'll put it up before the vote clearly so people can see it. Because it's still a work in progress. All right. So I guess we can start with the current errata. Does anybody, you know, so for the council members, I guess, we made some we made some adjustments in the tax numbers to account for moving. It was just basically moving from one line item to another about related to the LIPA special assessments. So I believe there was no change. It was just putting it in a proper place in the budget compared to where it was before. Right? Is that correct, Donna?
That is correct.
It's just putting it where it's supposed to be in the budget versus where it was before. We had missed the sandbox, the pre-K program, the revenue for that. So we had to add that back into the budget. And we had also reflect some grant money we got as well as revenue. And then the other stuff was dominantly just. We had a temporary salary in the MLK Center that we had to remove. That was in the wrong spot. And then some stuff related to the stuff we took out of the capital budget and put it back in the operating budget where it should be. So that's reflected in here as well. Does anybody have, any of the council members have anything else that, like I said, I think we've all been providing our input on an ongoing basis. Any of the council members have anything else they need to bring up?
I just want to have a clarification on the sandbox program. Just as the budget is drafted now with the proposed errata, the proposed budget, sandbox is included?
Yes, the expenses were included. We didn't include the revenue. We missed the revenue.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also wanted to make a summary comment on. That's all right?
Okay.
So the errata sheet actually increases our revenues by $415,000. And offset is offset with a $415,000 increase in expenses. And the increase in expenses were some items that were formerly in the capital budget that are less than $250,000. And then some minor adjustments, including unemployment insurance will be going up. So the but the big piece of the rep is a $350,000 grant that was obtained by the city by Senator Kaminsky. So we are grateful to him for that money. So luckily, primarily through that, we are able to make some housekeeping adjustments that we need to make on the budget. So it's a net zero impact, but it increases revenue, increases expenses. Thank you.
Yeah. And also, I guess we made, there's a small adjustment in the water fund budget too because of retirements that somebody's being promoted to fill the retiring position. So there was some salary, a small salary adjustment there. But other than that, it was, yeah. So basically, we added about $415,000 in adjustments in revenues and reduced the expenditures by that amount. So it's all...
Well, it's important to know that, okay, we increased the revenue by $415,000. The grant from Kaminsky, the 350, I believe, was in the capital project or capital budget. And we moved it to operating where it belongs. But the key is that restoration fund balance, we had to reduce the restoration of the fund balance from 573 to 374 to balance it out.
Okay.
That means that the fund balance that we're looking, that we're going to adopt in the budget, doesn't mean that we're not going to try to put more in the fund balance, but it was reduced to 374.
Okay.
And also, it's important to note that the letter that we received from the state comptroller, I believe we had to reduce the taxes, $4,000 and some change. We did that too.
Yeah. That was kind of funny.
Yeah, we all was calculating it different. And they said, "You're $4,000 off." So we did that adjustment.
Yeah. Just for the interest that I guess for the public. Yeah, we got a letter from the state comptroller that our $80 million budget, they decided we were $4,000 off on the tax cap. So we had to make a $4,000 adjustment. Yeah. So, all right. I mean, does any of the council members have anything else for the errata?
Everybody, I shared with the group one item. And I believe it's grant funded by Senator Kaminsky's office. It has to do with the beach park lifeguards. My only concern about the items or items is that we don't wait for the grant to possibly go ahead and move forward because the beach park season is so short. And I was just hopeful that that equipment could be provided for. And basically, what it is, is ample, you know, masks and protection gear and that type of stuff. And I was, I spoke with Donna, and she had mentioned that that's been taken care of. So as far as I can tell, everything I've seen here is fine. I don't have any other further comments at this point.
Okay. I mean, if we get a grant for PPE or, you know, for the lifeguards or whatever, that's great. We probably don't want to put that in the budget because we don't know 100% we're getting it. So if we do get it, that's even better. That's great. But I don't think we want to account for that in the budget because if we put it in as revenue and then it doesn't materialize, then we got to make that up somewhere.
Yeah, as long as the commitment to the, on the operating side, whether or not we get the grant money is going to be extra. As long as we provide for it in the budget, I'm fine with that. As far as the expenditure side.
Yeah, I think as far as I know, the lifeguards are getting everything they need. So I mean, that goes back to two. We've been, you know, we've been putting in requests. The OEM office has been putting in requests through the Nassau County OEM. And they've been replenishing our PPE as well as we're getting it through our normal suppliers as well when we can. So based on my understanding, we're okay right now on PPE. Hopefully, there's not a resurgence, you know, in the virus. But from what I'm told right now, we're pretty good on PPE.
And if we do get it in this future fiscal year, budget wise, it'll be that much better.
Correct. Because, you know, as everybody's saying, there's a good chance this will be coming back in the fall. So...
That's all I have to, you know, comment on.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to thank everyone for working so hard on changing the way we, the city actually does a budget so that it's realistic. It's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of sacrifice. It's going to put us on the right path.
Thank you so much for saying that. So that you know, everyone knows that because there was such discussion about the capital budget, we're going to put a policy out that you all will review to pass in June, before the end of the fiscal year, on how to properly do a capital budget. Also, we're going to give you, probably within the next week or so, so you have time to read. I mean, we're going to have a whole stack of new policies that you have to, or that's going to be coming out of the finance office. And so then we will talk about budgeting so that it will be a policy set forward on the proper way to do a budget, a budget that needs to be done. So that's something that you can look at, look at year to year.
Okay.
I have a question for Donna. In the, just to be sure, I just want to make sure that it's really clear for everybody at this point. Can you re-explain the $2.7 million in bond anticipation note revenue that's budgeted, please?
Yeah, the $2.7 million bond anticipation note is for the payouts for the police. We have a schedule that we pay, and I guess it's over, they get paid over a four-year period. And right now, ideally, we should be budgeting for that, but we can't at this time. So that's what the anticipation note is for, is the, just for the payouts. And that's exactly what we told the state. And I guess that's it, actually.
Just to follow up on that point. So according to the state, that means this, next year's budget, to them, is still structurally imbalanced. Is that right?
No. What they're saying to us is that we have to move away from borrowing. They see that we cannot move away from borrowing this year. So we have to show over a period of time how we're going to move away from the, it is...
So that means...
However, we can only balance it because we have to do the borrowing.
You're right. So it's structured. Despite all the work that you and Ina and the department heads have done, despite everything, we still have to borrow for those payouts, right?
Yes. Yes.
I can't believe that. I really can't believe that. That's crazy. I do believe you, but it's shocking. It's shocking that after all of that work, we still have to borrow and a tax increase.
I think also, Karen, if I understand it, there have been retirees in the past, let's say, year two or three, because they're getting paid out over a two or three-year plan, that to pay them off lump sum in one year, it's my understanding, would have been a pretty drastic increase in this year's tax rate. I think, Donna, correct me if I'm wrong, if going forward, we allow for money to be set aside through operating surpluses, I'll call it, fund future retirements. So we're building up money to be set aside internally, to be paid when people retire without having to bond. And Ina and Donna, just correct me if anything I said is not totally accurate.
Ina, Ina just brought up a good point, and she's in here. There were two problems with the budget. One was that in prior years, the revenues were overstated. So we know from the capital budget that the expenses were understated because they were moved to the capital. And then you borrowed money on things that probably the average person wouldn't borrow money for. So we fixed the revenue side of everything this year. That's why you see it going, you see all the revenues, and you see back to about four or five years, a trend. And so because we fixed the revenues, we couldn't fix the revenue and the expenditures in the same year. So now we're looking forward to going ahead and saying, now we got our revenues projected where we think they're going to come in. Now we can project out the expenses.
So to finish that thought, for say next year, this same time, we already have to find another $2.5 million in savings or more so that we don't have to borrow for the following year's payouts. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're behind, we're behind for next year already?
So we either have to find $2.5 million in savings or raise $2.5 billion more in revenue. So that's where people have been sending in, and I want to thank the public. And we're taking a lot of things that they're saying under consideration on ways we can increase our revenue. And so it's either cut expenses or increase revenues or a combination of the two.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we discussed this during the, during the first budget hearing, or during the budget hearing where we said, you know, this upcoming year is going to be focused on fixing the systemic issues, the underlying issues. Because, look, we learned the last two years with the 8% tax increases, just raising taxes isn't fixing the problem. So it's, we got to fix the underlying systemic issues, which is what this is going to be the focus this year. So...
So that potentially more cuts, but also increasing revenue too at the same time?
Yep.
And it's important that people know.
We're not...
It's important that people know we stay within the tax cap.
Yeah.
This year, we stayed within the tax cap.
Which is a big accomplishment. Thank you, Donna and Ina.
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to thank Ina for all her hard work. Because I know I've sent a lot of information back and forth. And I'm sure she'll miss me after this budget is adopted. But I appreciate all her hard work.
I'm sure you're not going to miss you, Mike. No, you'll be...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We appreciate that. You'll be emailing us back and forth when you start getting all these policies.
Good.
All right. Anything else about the errata sheet then for now? We still, you know, again, we still have until Tuesday to make any, if we find anything else, any changes. But we'll get this up, obviously, before the hearing for the public to see it as well. If we got nothing else on the errata sheet, let's move on to the capital plan. Let's see. The one, the one thing, I guess I'll start. The one thing I found in the capital plan, we had $6,750 in there for the heavy-duty trolley bus. But I believe that had been, it's in the errata sheet. We moved that back, we moved that back into the operating budget.
Yes, we did.
Right. So that's got to come out of the, that's got to come out of the capital plan.
As well as the ATV.
Right.
Okay.
The lifeguard ATV is in the operation.
That's right. That moved.
If we're going to talk capital, I have Mr. Morando is on the meeting. I'm going to unmute him right now.
Sure. Please do.
You're now live.
Okay. Just a question. Moving that $6,750 for the heavy-duty trolley, there's also $540,000 of non-city funding that needs to be bonded first, and then we get reimbursed by the FTA.
Okay. We moved it because it says funds from others. So $6,750 would just be a due-to, due-from, or a transfer from operating over to capital.
So I'm going to take the $540 out of non-city funding also then?
No. The $540, the $6,750 is gone.
Okay.
And on the lifeguard ATV, that's where we knew we got the grant. So that was removed as well. And it went to operating.
But we're keeping that in the non-city funding line though. The $25,000.
The $25,000 comes out altogether because it's been put in operating.
And then it would be the same for the $100,000 for the personal protective equipment?
Yeah.
$200,000 for the ambulance?
Yeah. It's on the errata sheet.
Okay. We also moved the, what do we move here? We have fire department vehicles in the errata sheet.
That's the $200,000 for the androids.
The $200,000. Okay. So that's already out of the capital plan.
Capital assistance grant for...
Okay. All right. So that's already out. All right. That's fine.
I had a question about some projects on page seven. There's some noise in the background.
Sorry, can't hear you, Karen. I couldn't hear you.
Can someone go on mute? Okay. For the projects funded by grants and city funds in general fund on page seven of the Word document?
Yes.
There's, there's two in the new capital plan. And those are...
Okay. Which one?
I think that $250 for Park Avenue Resiliency. And then the $200 for road overlays.
Okay. The $200 for road overlay is under projects funded by grants and city funds in general fund. If you see road overlays, roads to be determined, $200,000 city funds, $200,000 funds from other, that's on, under roads. It's the second line on the first sheet of the spreadsheet. And the reason we split it up that way, they used to take the full $400,000 that came from CHIPS, the Capital Highway Improvement Program from DOT, and put that right into revenue. And then after we would do, we would bond the project, we would then submit those invoices to the DOT, and then they would receive it as a revenue. What we started doing last year was we split that. We put $200,000 that we bond, and we do $200,000 that goes into revenue. So they split it.
Okay. All right. I have a follow-up question to that. When the capital plan was submitted, there was a detailed process by which the roads were picked.
There still is. We have a rating system that was done many years ago, based on conditions of the road, based on amount of traffic, and also based on whether there was utility work necessary on the road. So if there was utility work necessary on the road, that would have, go into more of a reconstruction program where we do the road reconstruction, where we actually replace all the utilities and the road. And then what we do each year, we look at which ones are remaining that had the worst ratings. We go back, and Joe and Brooke Anderson, the construction inspector, they go review as many roads as possible that we might possibly be able to do, and they rate them again to see if, which ones have deteriorated any further.
I've got a letter from a resident that a street in the West End hasn't been paved in at least 17 years.
There's probably, there's probably a lot of streets that haven't been paved in 17 or 20 years. Although we have done a lot of paving between what we've done and what LIPA and National Grid have done, or PSCNG, I should say.
John?
Yeah.
Would that rating of roads annually, would that be an available public document for people to see? Or...
The original document is on the website. If you go into Public Works, and it shows all what all the ratings were. But we go out and redo it again because the document has been existing for quite some time. So we reevaluate what's left. Yeah.
So is, so can you put an update on the website?
Yeah. Once we, once we go, and that's what we do, we cross off what's been done on the website. And we actually have an app there that shows the various types of overlays or reconstructions that have taken place. So you can see on a color-coded map from 1986 forward, how many roads have been done. Were they just overlaid? Were they reconstructed? And were they done by National Grid? Were they done by PSCNG?
So this way, we can see what streets haven't been done and...
Exactly. And then with Joe and, right, and with Joe and Brooke will do, they will go out now with, once the budget's approved, and we know how much money we have for overlays, we will go out and we'll, we look at the worst roads again and determine if that's, if still the same order they should be done in. We try to pick, spread the roads out. We try to pick some in each of the sections of the city.
Okay. So then we can get back to this particular block to give them some sort of timeframe because right now, they have no time.
Which block was that again?
It's a block that I live on, Pennsylvania Avenue.
Pennsylvania, okay.
It's called Disclosure.
You weren't the one that wrote the letter.
No, I'm not.
I'm just, Disclosure. I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
John, John, in your professional experience, due to sandy reconstruction, roads, you know, sewer line connections and all of the things that have happened, and a fairly bad road rated five years ago may not be as poorly rated as something that may come up like a year ago. You know, the list could jump.
Absolutely. That's why we go out and check again.
Right. Okay.
Absolutely right.
Right. Okay.
And then, John, I'm looking still on page seven. You have a new funds column, and then you have existed bonded funds column. If we haven't spent all the existing funds, why are we asking for new funds?
Because, well, what we do is that so that we can have enough funds, like on road reconstruction. We have $289,000 left from doing East Fulton. We still need to do Boyd Street. We started designing Boyd Street already. $289,000 is not going to be enough to do Boyd. So we added 520, and hopefully that will get finished Boyd. Plus with money we've budgeted on sewer mains and water mains, we'll be able to pick another block that has both bad utilities and bad roadway, and redo those blocks. You know, so we tried, what we try to do is do two reconstruction projects a year where we reconstruct the entire road with new curves, sidewalks, street lighting, water main, sewer main. And as you'll see in this special meeting, we're jumping ahead on Boyd to do the sewer main because it has actually collapsed there.
And then Donna, related to that example, for the $289,000, are those funds actually sitting in one of our bank accounts to cover it?
Is it?
It could...
Go on. Go ahead.
It could be a combination. So it, either something that was bonded and is earmarked for this project and is in the capital project bank account, or it pertains to those authorized but unissued bonds that, yeah, that we potentially can just include in the next issuance. Was already provided by the council prior years. Could be something from 15 or 16 or 17 remaining balances of unissued bonds.
Thank you.
And again, we would, we wouldn't put the project out until the bond was authorized, the bond anticipation notice authorized by Ina.
And John, do you still submit capital project summary forms?
The weekly forms?
No. The capital project summary forms, back in 2017, they were included in the, in the capital budget presentation to the council. And it really went over like the fund, the project, a description of the project.
The sheets that we get from all the, yes, I have all those sheets. I just haven't attached them to them yet because I don't know what's staying in and what's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. No, each, each department submits a sheet with the priorities they have and what it's going to cost and whether it needs outside engineering can be done, inside engineering. And we go through all those, and that's how we develop the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Morando?
Sorry, I was talking, and then I didn't realize I was muted. John, regarding the sewage plant, the current plan, and we recognize that this is a government timeline, but in, in the Walt Disney world, the line up to Bay Park is supposed to be done in about three years?
Right. The deadline on that is by 2024, the entire project will take place. So what's, what's going on right now is we have almost 100% design on a pump station for the, for the wastewater plant. So what's going to have to happen? We have, there's eight or nine different treatment trains down at the wastewater plant. But everything comes into the main pump station at the main plant. And then it's... but everything comes into the main pump station, uh, at the main plant. And then it's pumped from there through all the, the treatment system. It's brought up to a high enough pressure in the head to get through each treatment train. And then there's some other types of pumps in between. So what's gonna happen is the county has designed a, a plan that's gonna cost about $90 million. Uh, they're going to build a temporary pump station that will pump all the, through all our treatment trains. And when that's complete, then they're gonna reconstruct our existing pump station to be the permanent pump station. And then when the line is done from that pump station over to Bay Park, which is gonna go through the PSOS Hacks, through the marsh, instead of through any road, it's gonna be directionally drilled. Um, it's about four miles of, of pipeline, 24 inch pipeline. Once that pipeline is in effect, they will shut down the temporary pump station and switch over to the, um, the, uh, to the new pump station. And then the county will be, at that point, the county will have ownership of the pump station and the sewer collection system and the three lift stations that we have throughout the city. Uh, what they're doing, they're submitting a hazard mitigation plan that Joe and I have been working on with them on a weekly basis. We meet with them, uh, with Hazen and Sawyer and a firm called Arcadius, uh, to develop these plans. When that, uh, they've put in for a hazard mitigation 406 funding of $90 million to build that plant. Our obligation in the IMA is $18 million towards thing. If they get this $90 million, uh, we probably are not gonna have to spend the full 18 million, but towards that, we already have 12 and a half million in grants guaranteed towards the pipeline. So, so that, that project's moving along very well. Uh, and I didn't really include those things in the budget, but I did in the write-up, just give you a snapshot of what's going on with that.
Okay. Um, so, uh, so Mike's on a high fiber diet, so you might want to go to a 36 inch line. So it, it, if the sewage plant's probably gonna wind up getting ready to go into a decommissioning phase in, in three or four years. Um, we, we got, right now we have 320,000 in there for miscellaneous building repairs. Granted, I, we all know, well, those of us that have been down there know the condition of the, some of those buildings, but I, I guess my, my question is, would we be, I mean, rather than pumping money into buildings that might only have another three or four years left in that life, would we be better off if, if we had to, just renting trailers or something like that at a, at a longer?
That's, that's really a little misnomer. We put this repair into, uh, we added 430 to the miscellaneous building repairs line. This is really, what happened is when we were doing the sludge removal out of the, um, the two digesters, uh, we had to seed, uh, the primary digester from the secondary digester. And when that seeding was going on, they have those, they develop, uh, and this would be interesting for the TAP program. They, they, they have floating covers that keep the gas down and we burn the gas off and we use it for power down there. So what happened was one of the pressure relief valves on the primary tank failed to open when they were move, on the secondary tank, when they were moving it from the secondary tank to the primary tank and it collapsed the cover to that tank. So this is really to replace that cover and the DEC is making us do that. So we had 320,000 in building repairs. So I figured rather than try to budget a whole, you know, uh, 700 and some thousand dollars, and we're putting a, a, a short-term type roof. We're putting, not a floating roof, but we're putting a more permanent membrane over the roof. It could be much more economical. Otherwise it was gonna cost about two and a half million dollars to replace the floating roof. So.
Okay. All right. So this is to cover the digestors, not.
This is to cover the digest. It's not really repairing buildings.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then I guess the other one on, the other, other one I had is obviously the compliance ones. I said, we don't have a choice on those. We have to.
And that, that part of that money is gonna be to do the design that the DEC is requiring us under the consent order to decommission the plant.
Okay. The, the sewer upgrades though to 600,000, uh, just what, what are we doing with that?
That's for sewer mains. That would be for like, um, another project like Boyd Avenue or if we have another collapsed sewer main somewhere and we have to do an emergency replacement. You can see over the five years, we really reduce going out, uh, on those kind of things because the county will be taking over the sewer. And we've talked to their people in Public Works that when they do take over the collection system, we will try to give them a heads up a year ahead of when we're doing the road reconstructions so that they can plan in their capital budget to do those two sewer main replacements on whichever two blocks we pick for complete reconstruction.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I was just, uh, wondering, um, if, again, if the county was taking it over in a few years.
Yeah. Listen.
If we could have been a little more frugal, but, uh, like you said, stuff's the, that's the, the lines are so.
It's very, it's very frustrating. I mean, we meet with the DEC every two weeks and have quarterly reports to them under consent order. It's just Joe and I and they come with about 10 people. It's like, it's crazy.
All right. And then the, I think the other one I had was on the hydrant and water service replacement. About how much of that 200,000 is for hydrant replacement?
Uh, probably the majority of it. Uh, trying to get through so that we have all, all new hydrants in town. And again, that's work. We, we purchase the materials and our, uh, workers actually do the replacement. We do it in-house and then we capitalize their labor as part of that. So, uh, it helps reduce their labor costs to, on an annual basis.
So about, about what percentage would you say has been replaced so far?
I think we've probably got between 55 and 60% of the hydrants replaced.
Okay. So, so like 200,000, just what are we doing per year percent? We doing 5, 10% a year roughly or?
Yeah. 200,000 hydrants are about, uh, $2,800 apiece. So, you know, if, if you do 50 of them, it's, it's, it's a good number. And I think we have 800 and something hydrants. So.
All right. All right. I think that covered my questions.
John, I don't have, uh, this is to John Bendo. I don't have a question, but I just thought of something and I know it's not in the budget, but Boardwalk opened today and I, I don't remember if there was any lighting, uh, issues that we know of going forward, you know, with the lights that were problem. Are they, uh, something that we'll probably have to wait until?
No. I, I can actually answer that if you want me to, John.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. So we, we, we've been on top of Sternberg. Uh, we just finished a conference call with them. They've agreed to supply us. We, they had supplied us with some retrofit kits and some new lights for the ones that broke that came down. We had Wellsback install them. Wellsback is gonna charge us, uh, we're gonna put a storage bin in the back. Sternberg is, is, um, building 106 retrofit kits. There's 117 lights down there. Seven of them are done already. Uh, the other 110, we'll start with putting the lights up that are missing with the retrofit kits and then we'll put the rest up. Uh, Wellsback will be doing about three a day and they'll be being paid by Sternberg through us. We'll pay Wellsback in our, our annual street lighting contract and then Sternberg will reimburse us for that. So tho, those replacements will be completely recovered, uh, covered by Sternberg Lighting. Uh, so there, you know, it's, it's, it's a, uh, opportunity cost for us because the lights haven't been there. But, uh, in terms of getting them repaired and back up the stuff and the new retrofit kit will work very well. So, uh, we've, you know, we've gotten good commitment from, uh, from Wellsback on it. They felt it, it set up nice.
And, and opening the Boardwalk currently right now, um, it, it doesn't present any new challenges to Wellsback or anybody else as far as, uh, you know, gaining access to it. There's no difficulty on their, on.
No, because they'll be working in a small area each day. They'll be doing about three lights a day.
Okay. Thank you.
And we hope they'll be starting within the next week. So the next two weeks. So.
Perfect.
All right. Um, anyone else got any questions on the capital plan?
No, I, I'm good.
Okay. Um, all right. That went, that went pretty easy, smooth and easy. So, all right. I guess, uh, that went quicker than I thought. So, um, all right, we're gonna go into an executive session now. We have to talk about some, uh, pending legal litigation with the attorney. So that's something we do in closed session. So, um, just want to, I guess, uh, get confirmation from the council about doing this. Everybody okay with that?
Who seconds that?
Who second?
I second the motion to go over to executive session.
All in favor of executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're gonna go into executive session. So folks, we're gonna be dropping the, uh, the live stream, um, right now. Um, and, um, we will have to come back briefly to just end the meeting, but there'll be, um, nothing else discussed after this, um, after this executive session.
Understood.
Stand by while.
So is anyone else?
Okay. Well, uh, we just finished our executive session. So, uh, with that, uh, we're going to end the meeting. So everyone, if, if anyone's still on the line, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you next time.
Bye.
Next week.
Close the meeting. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
And our, as a reminder, our next meeting will be a special meeting on Tuesday night at 7:00 PM on the same platform.
Don't forget to fill out your census.
All right. Bye.